Good evening, I'd like to convene the Monday, June 10th, City Council meeting. I want to apologize to those who are in attendance tonight and those who are watching. We're running a little bit behind schedule and the reason is actually a very good reason. We had a fabulous presentation by Ms. Paul Seth and Mr. Love, our Finance Director and our Public Works Director, about what we're looking at for our capital improvement plan over the next five years. The council got pretty jazzed about it because the numbers are looking really great and our staff has worked very, very hard on it, so I'll apologize. It ran a little bit late, but we will get started right away. So with that, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sint, would you please do the roll call for us?
Councilmember Juneman?
Here.
Councilmember Neblet?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Knutson?
Here.
Mayor Abrams?
Here. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the agenda, to approve the agenda?
Slow move.
Two, three together now. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Knutson, seconded by Juneman, to approve the agenda. Further discussion, I'm going to assert a point, council, that we need to make a move to, in our agenda. We need to move F3, the presentation of the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. There, our accountant that was coming in to make the report to us had a personal matter that came up, and he can make it towards the end of our council meeting, so we need to move that to the end. We'll be talking to our, concerning the audit. Is there any other discussion? Any additions that anyone wants to make? Then, okay, then I will add a couple of points under Council Presentation. I think I'll just do the category of development and redevelopment in Maplewood. And I've got a couple of points, some new things that have been happening in our city, and I'll report that then. Okay, with that, seeing no lights on, no further discussion. All those in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, let's move on to our workshop minutes. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
I move approval of the workshop minutes for May 28th.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblet, approval of the Maplewood City Council Workshop Minutes for May 28th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to the council meeting minutes for May 28th.
I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And we move on to administrative presentations and our council calendar update. City Manager Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The council calendar is an opportunity for staff to let you know about the things that are coming up at our next workshops and City Council meetings, and also some of the other items that we have been working on your behalf. At our next meeting on June 24th, we will have, instead of the Administrative Department presentation, we'll have a continuation of the CIP. We'll talk about our pet licenses ordinance and communications plan and department presentation. And at the council meeting, you'll have a chance to hear again from our consultant on the Nature Center Master Plan, and we will be looking for approval that evening. On July 8th, at the workshop, we will continue with the budget presentations, or the department presentations, and if we need to, and if we're ready, we'll have maybe a quick overview of the 2020 budget. And July 22nd, we will also have continuing department presentations. And what those are meant to do is just to give you an overview of what the city staff in those departments are working on, a little bit about their departments, if there's some efficiencies or some innovations that they've done in the past year, and also just talking a little bit about forecasting what they need in the 2020 budget. With regard to different things that we're working on at the direction of the council, we have Tobacco 21 scheduled, I think it's for August, August 12th. The tree program is concluded for this year. Mr. Love is still working on the pedestrian safety plan, and as you can tell, he's been busy with a few other things the last couple of months, particularly potholes, CIP, a few other things, but that is on his plate. We will also have follow-up reports for you in July on the new on-street parking ordinance, how that's working out, and the excess calls for service ordinance. We have pet licenses scheduled. The board and commission interview review process, I will be meeting with the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board next week, and then I'll be able to wrap it up and give you a report on their suggestions for how to improve the interview process for boards and commissions. Just a quick look at upcoming community events, I'll just highlight a couple of them. Tomorrow, at the MCC YMCA, there is the St. Paul Business Education Series, and that's tomorrow at 7:30 to 9:00. And that's Getting Traction for Your Business will be the presentation. Also, on 6/13, that's this week, on Wednesday, or Thursday night, will be the Wakefield Grand Opening Celebration, and that's, everyone is invited to that, that's from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. On the 18th, we'll have movie night at the Bruin Trump Farm. And then I did also want to point out that on June 26th, we will be having our fire station study open house, and that will be at the Hazelwood Fire Station on County Road C in Hazelwood. And we've been advertising that in the Maplewood Living, we just started a social media campaign on that today. You can also go to our website and take a look at what those meetings are about, but it's really to get input from our residents on evaluating our three fire stations and whether or not we should invest in the Hazelwood Station, to what extent. And we're opening those to the public, there'll be two events, one on the 26th and one on July 11th. And with that, Mayor, I don't have anything else unless you have other items that you'd like myself or staff to look into for your.
I don't see any lights on, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Then, moving on to council presentations, I just wanted to highlight a couple of development and redevelopment opportunities that have been happening here in Maplewood. I was very pleased to go to the ribbon cutting over at Elk Ridge, which is on, located on Beam Avenue. One of the things that I said, made a comment at that event, was that I think I've driven by that piece of property for 25 years. And for 25 years, there was a lot of weeds on there, and it, there was really nothing happening. And now, I'm very pleased to say that there is a beautiful, it's a memory care facility that has really thought about so many details for care for their, the residents that live there. So that was really a fun open house, it was really nice to see that what used to be just a vacant lot with a lot of weeds on it, and I remember two people would dump there once in a while, and there were timbers there, and now it is this beautiful facility, so that was great to see. I also got a chance to wear the hard hat and put in a shovel into the ground over at the trail's edge of Maplewood, which is 152 units of market rate apartments that have a lot of really nice amenities, including, they have a dog area, they have a yoga room, an exercise room, a community room, they have what they call the cabin in the back, which is a three-season porch. It's going to be located right next to Costco over off of County Road D. And this time next year, council, we will have, they talked about having us out for a ribbon cutting, so that'll be kind of fun to see, because, you know, as council members, we all get to vote on those kinds of projects, and it really is great to then actually see the project come into fruition. So I was able to put in the shovel there, and they've got a lot of work ahead, and it's going to take a year. And the other redevelopment opportunity that I got to witness was at some, a place called Renew Anchored Dentures, that is really kind of in the center of the Birch Run Center, that shopping center over there. It used to be, years ago, it was Gander Mountain, and now it's a spine clinic, it's a, they have medical companies there. Well, this Renew Anchored Dentures is on the side of that building, and it is a beautiful facility, and they, it's really a lovely, I mean, they've got a full lab and everything in there, it was really kind of a fun ribbon cutting. So we have a lot of things that are happening in terms of development and redevelopment in our city, and it was really kind of an exciting couple of weeks since our last council meeting. So with that, we are going to skip ahead now to the summary of the 2019 Spring Cleanup Event, and I believe, Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, yes. I know at the last meeting, Councilmember Juneman provided a brief update, but Sean Finwall from Community Development, just in your packet, put a full memo together outlining kind of all the key stats from this year's spring cleanup. Won't go through all of that, but just to highlight some things, there were 432 visits this year, which is generally average for how many people we, residents, we see visiting the cleanup. In total, there's about, just under 29 tons of solid waste collected, and as you know, in keeping with Maplewood's sustainability initiatives, it really is an opportunity to kind of look at reuse and recycling first before it actually makes it to the landfill. So one of the new programs that the city offered this year as part of this cleanup was an organization called Us Again, and they were collecting all of the clothing items, so any textiles or clothing that were brought, they actually take all of those items and they either reuse them, they give them to communities in need, or they do recycle those as well. So that's one of the many reuse, local reuse companies that are present at that event to kind of, to make sure that that reuse and recycling initiatives of the city move So with that, I just, there were some thank yous that we wanted to put out there, first for Tennyson, the city's recycling contractor that coordinated their portion of the event. Thanks to the mayor and council for your attendance and welcoming people, checking people in, directing them where they need to go, and greeting people with a smiling face, it goes a long way, we know. And then, there was many city staff to thank, I know Public Works and the Police Department were involved in setup and in running the event, but also kind of the breakdown at the end, so thanks to all that. And also thanks to Sean Finwall and Community Development for, once again, leading this event that's important to the community. And then the last thank you would be to Bachmann's and Half Price Books, they did donate some coupons that were handed out, as well as Ramsey County Environmental Health for the reusable shopping bags. So with that, the full statistics and recap were in your packet, I'm happy to answer any questions, but did just want to put that out there.
Councilmember Juneman?
I'd just like to point out that we thank the people who came, and you can put it on your calendar for next spring, so after another long winter, you'll have somewhere to clean out your garage. And one thing I'd like to point out is the number of bicycle, used bicycles, we always collect every year, that the fellow who does that is always thrilled to come here, he gets probably more here than anywhere else, and all those bicycles go to either being, they are either refurbished or become parts, and all the bicycles are given to needy kids. So it's a really, a good twofer. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything further, council members? It is no action that's required on that, let's move on to the consent agenda. I wanted to remove number four and talk about that separately, that's the conditional use permit review for Bauder's Outlet, 2000 Rice Street. And also, I wanted to highlight Maplewood Organics Collection Site, I think I jumped ahead of you.
Yeah, you did.
I knew you were going to do that, Councilmember Juneman. We'll both highlight it, all right?
This is one time, I'll let you do it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, then let's start with Mr. Thompson, this is, the Maplewood Organics is on you too, I believe?
Do you want me to do a brief presentation on that?
Yes.
On that agreement?
Yes.
Sure, so mayor and council.
I think, well, one of the things when we, we're highlighting it because we want the residents to know what is happening, and from my perspective, I think if you could explain what the process is going to be, you know, we're going through an RFB, RFP for our trash collection and our recycling, and organics was kind of brought up as part of that, and if you could tell us the basics so our residents can anticipate this, where is it going to be, how are they going to be able to drop off the organics, what's the process going to be? That would be helpful.
Sure. So mayor and council, as you referenced, the city's currently issued an RFP for renewal of our contracts for organized trash and recycling services for the community. As part of that, Ramsey County is looking at kind of launching the larger infrastructure that's needed to support curbside organics recycling. So organics recycling is, you know, the household items like food scraps, other things that can be kind of composted and reused rather than going into a landfill. Until Ramsey County gets the, kind of the countywide infrastructure in place to allow for curbside organics recycling, they're partnering with a number of communities within the county to put, to place satellite kind of drop-off sites where residents and other folks can go to that site and drop off their household organics. It's different than yard waste, it would be anything that's collected in the home in terms of food scraps. They've identified the parking lot in the Maplewood Community Center, so just out, in kind of in between the District Court Building and the YMCA, where they would construct a very small, occupy about three parking spaces, it'd be fenced off, and any resident could then take their household organics and drop them off in that location. And then Ramsey County would coordinate the maintenance of the site, the pickup, and making sure that the hauler gets the organics to the proper facilities in the metro area. And that is until, again, we can launch the larger curbside program as part of the RFP that's currently issued. I think the current plan is around 2022 when curbside could potentially be launched in the community. So the agreement is just for the terms between the county and the city for the operation of that site.
Okay. Councilmember Juneman has a question.
Actually, I have a comment. This is how the county does things, it's on the retirement plan. This was supposed to be done by May of 2017, it's a little off. Anyway, that's why they're doing it though, is to get us in the habit of collecting organics, and for those, we already have people who are doing this, by the way, and have formed neighborhood groups, and one person a week takes everybody's compostables to the yard waste sites where they have a drop-off. You've got to be dedicated to do that, so we're trying to make it easier, that's the whole point. And it is probably going to be in our new contract that when we get to that point, our hauler will be part of it. So it is an important habit to develop. And we need to point out that at the distribution site, you will be able to get compostable bags, you can't just use any old plastic bag, it has to be a compostable bag, but there'll be more details as it gets closer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a motion, we're going to deal with number four separately, is there a motion for?
I move consent agenda items one through three and five through 10.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith, consent agenda items one through three and five through 10. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I wanted to deal with the conditional use permit review for Bauder's Outlet separately, and the reason that I wanted to do that was because of the concerns that I have in working with the Rice Larpenter Group. We have a lot, an alliance with St. Paul and Roseville and Maplewood, working together to really enhance the Rice Larpenter area. And just at the last Rice Larpenter meeting, there were complaints about the appearance of Bauder's Outlet. And so in looking at the CUP review, there are issues there, and I guess what I wanted to do is I wanted to find, get an update on the issues, and specifically, they talked, the issues in the staff report talked about the boats that are parked in the front parking area, and that was actually brought up by the other two cities, by St. Paul and Roseville, and how that did not really lend to a good appearance. And also, I think that there were problems with some of the landscaping, I think. Mr. Thompson, can you give us an update on that?
Certainly, mayors and members of the council. So city staff has followed up with the, with the business owner to kind of understand the delay in, why the storage was occurring up front in the parking lots and the delayed installation of the landscaping. It's a result entirely of just kind of the wet spring, so the boat storage area that's approved by the council is part of the conditional use permit, is for the field that's in the back of the site, they'll be screened with the landscaping, the fence, and the other site improvements. That area is not paved, it's kind of a gravel and turfed area, and because of the soggy spring, they weren't able to kind of finalize construction to allow for all those boats to be moved back there. They've recently completed that, as they've started to move the boats back, and then they're also have plans in the near future to complete the landscaping that was required by the council. So we expect that those items, the boat storage and the final landscaping, will be completed yet this summer. It's not anticipated that would wait another year until those things are finished.
Okay, so what, what would be your recommendation then? I want to make sure that this gets done, because Rice Larpenter, you know, there's a lot of effort and time and money being put into revitalizing that area, and this Bauder's Outlet sits right in that area. And so I want to make sure that we don't just let this fall through the cracks. So what would be your recommendation in terms of, can we revisit this in a couple of months, or what are our options, because this is a CUP review right now?
Sure. So mayor and council, yes, the council's prerogative, if, you know, if you want to continue the review, I think staff would recommend that the council look at it again in one year. That's not to say that staff won't follow up with the property owner in a shorter time period, to make sure that the compliance is sooner rather than later, but, and that's why we scheduled the council's review out for a year, but if the council wants to see it again in a shorter time period, we'd certainly be receptive to that. Either way, city staff will be following up with the owners yet this summer.
You know, council members, what I'd like to be able to do, and I'll just throw it out there, is I'd like to be able to report back to the alliance that we're reviewing this in three months, and that that should be enough time for the landscaping issue to be resolved and for the back storage to be taken care of.
End of September?
I'm sorry?
And, like, end of September?
Okay, that's what, what I would propose, council members. Councilmember Juneman?
Yes, and just so you know, because, as you know, our staff representative on the alliance, it was Sean Finwall, and she's also the one that was working on this project, and she felt like she was conflicted, might I say, but she was very thorough with these people about, this is an unusual use, and this corridor is going to be developing, and you need to do this, 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 and this. So while they might have had a soggy yard, possibly excuse, I don't think they need any more excuses, and they knew they had to do landscaping. So the fact that it's kind of an oddball use for that, for the now new corridor, they need to be put on their toes, that they need to stay where they were told to be from the beginning, which was do it nice and make it look nice, and, you know, you have a deadline. So I think we need to make it pretty clear, and I think that reviewing again in three months maybe will get the message across.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor, I definitely support the 90-day review, that seems very generous and flexible of us, if I do say so myself. But I was going to ask if it'd be all right if City Manager Coleman could, maybe for the benefit of the new kids on the council, as well as, I think, for me and others, you know, we approve a lot of CUPs from this dais, and we have likely hundreds in effect across the city, and every CUP that we approve is, comes to us because it has the potential of being a nuisance, right? It's outside of our guidelines, it's outside of ordinances, and we are allowing a property owner to do something outside of that, and typically are putting conditions on that to make sure, to try to either mitigate or eliminate that nuisance. I think it'd be good, maybe, for City Manager Coleman to share, how do we review this?
Sure.
How active are we at reviewing this?
That's a good idea.
Because they don't always come, a lot of times they come in the consent agenda, we often don't talk about them, it'd be a good idea just to know how active, particularly staff is with this.
Or City Manager Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the city council. Councilmember Smith asked me how many CUPs we have, and all I can say is that it's hundreds, hundreds. Typically, what we do is, this business required a conditional use permit, and that means that they are permitted to have the use with conditions that the council finds would be helpful to mitigate any nuisances or effects that it would have on adjacent properties. So we have several of those, this was approved a year ago in May, so right before the staff report gets to be written, the staff goes out and reviews those. We do have a tickler file that brings them all up, and so we know when we have to go inspect them. I would say, in, in reading this report, that perhaps Director Thompson and I should talk a little bit more about how we're more proactive on the front end before we bring this to you, because this is a little bit conflicting when it says, you know, mostly this is, you know, it's really conforming to our CUP, but there's still a couple of things that need to get done. We should really try to get ahead of that so that when we bring it to you, it's done. And if there's a problem that we can't solve it from a staff level, then we would bring it to you and get some direction. But I think we could do a little bit better job of making sure that things that are supposed to be done at that year point are done. And there are some differences, some CUPs, we'll review them every year for five or six years, and then we'll go, gee, I don't really, we only bring it back to you if there becomes a problem, because they simply just are functioning the way they're supposed to, and they're not impacting anybody. So they do vary about when they come back and things, but I think we could maybe improve a little bit on how we get, make sure things are happening when they should be happening. I know that staff will be contacting the developer, the owner tomorrow and saying, you know, you've really got to get this landscaping done in 90 days, or, you know, we're going to bring you back to the council. So we will work on, on trying to improve that, but typically, it's, comes back every year until we realize there's really not a need to do so.
Thank you for that explanation. Do you have another question? Okay, go ahead.
Just a follow-up there. Thank you. So I think it's important to note that when it comes to CUPs, unlike general code violations, where we really do rely on residents to call in and let us know about those, there's not, there's some level of proactive enforcement there. With CUPs, it is something where the staff is going out annually, physically inspecting to make sure that we're meeting those guidelines, and then, you know, hopefully, staff is dealing with that directly, and then it's fine, or if not, it comes to us. But, you know, there's a whole lot of CUPs we don't hear about.
We don't need to.
Because they're going well. And, but I do want to make it clear that I think the city, from, from my perspective, as well as what I'm hearing from City Manager Coleman, is it's the onus is on us to continually inspect and enforce those CUPs, and I think that's really an important distinction between general code enforcement.
Good point.
Very good.
Councilmember Juneman?
asked me how many CUPs we have. And all I can say is that it's hundreds, hundreds. Typically, what we do is, this business required a conditional use permit. And that means that they are permitted to have the use with conditions that the council finds would be helpful to mitigate any nuisances or effects that it would have on adjacent properties. So, we have several of those. This was approved a year ago in May. So, right before the staff report gets to be written, the staff goes out and reviews those. We do have a tickler file that brings them all up. And so, we know when we have to go inspect them. I would say, in reading this report, that perhaps Director Thompson and I should talk a little bit more about how we're more proactive on the front end before we bring this to you. Because this is a little bit conflicting when it says, you know, mostly this is, you know, it's really conforming to our CUP, but there's still a couple of things that need to get done. We should really try to get ahead of that so that when we bring it to you, it's done. And if there's a problem that we can't solve it from a staff level, then we would bring it to you and get some direction. But I think we could do a little bit better job of making sure that things that are supposed to be done at that year point are done. And there are some differences. Some CUPs, we'll review them every year for five or six years. And then we'll go, gee, I don't really, we only bring it back to you if there becomes a problem. Because they simply just are functioning the way they're supposed to, and they're not impacting anybody. So, they do vary about when they come back and things. But I think we could maybe improve a little bit on how we get, make sure things are happening when they should be happening. I know that staff will be contacting the developer, the owner tomorrow and saying, you know, you've really got to get this landscaping done in 90 days, or, you know, we're going to bring you back to the council. So, we will work on trying to improve that. But typically, it comes back every year until we realize there's really not a need to do so.
Thank you for that explanation. Do you have another question?
Okay, follow up there.
Sure.
Thank you. So, I think it's important to note that when it comes to CUPs, unlike general code violations, where we really do rely on residents to call in and let us know about those, there's not, there's some level of proactive enforcement there. With CUPs, it is something where the staff is going out annually, physically inspecting to make sure that we're meeting those guidelines. And then, you know, hopefully, staff is dealing with that directly, and then it's fine. Or if not, it comes to us. But, you know, there's a whole lot of CUPs we don't hear about.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're going well. And, but I do want to make it clear that I think the city, from my perspective, as well as what I'm hearing from City Major Coleman, is it's the onus is on us to continually inspect and enforce those CUPs. And I think that's really an important distinction between general code enforcement.
Good point.
Very good.
Council member Juneman?
Not to cast aspersions or anything, but I do believe that Roseville might have an ulterior motive because Bauders Outlet moved from Roseville to Maplewood. I just thought I'd throw that in.
Well, then, do we have a motion concerning approving the CUP with my proposal of 90 days?
So moved.
Moved by Juneman to approve the CUP review for the Bauders Outlet and review it again in 90 days. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Neblet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Then I take it that staff will go out and discuss this with Bauders Outlet. And hopefully, we'll be able to have the CUP taken care of and extended for a year, once we get these issues taken care of. Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight. And now, we are moving on to unfinished business. Tonight, we are talking about the Myth Operational Action Plan. And that is Chief Nadeau's topic.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight, perhaps we can get that presentation pulled up for the council. We are here tonight because at the city council meeting of April 8th, the council directed me to meet with the Myth's representatives and create a, an action plan, otherwise known as an operational action plan, to try and mitigate some of the issues that we were experiencing at the Myth with violence, overdoses, and some other issues. We did meet three times. I think that the, that the meeting stretched out over about a two-month period because the Myth wanted to have their security representative, Mr. Stanek, do an assessment. And Mr. Stanek thought it was important to observe events that were taking place at the Myth. And so, we started with the template from the Stargate because that was the direction of council, and that's kind of what we'd done in the past. And we did meet a couple of times, but we didn't make a lot of progress until that assessment came back. Once the assessment came back, I think that was a lot of agreement and collaboration at that point on a number of different points. Most of the areas that the city or that the police department wanted to see happen, I think that we got some agreement from the Myth. And so, areas of agreement, there's actually 24 items. There was one item which the representatives from the Myth wanted some time to think about, to see whether or not they thought that the idea was feasible. And they did come back to us, I think we found out today, although I think it meant a comment over the weekend that they were in agreement on the 24th item. They thought that, you know, some of the things that we wanted as expectations weren't necessarily things they were having problems with, but they didn't object to the expectation. An example of that in your operational action plan would be bottle service, where instead of buying one drink at a time, you buy a bottle of alcohol. They had stated that they hadn't had that for some time, but we wanted to make sure that that was an expectation that continued. And that if we thought it was a reasonable expectation, that we would put that in writing. We also talked in that agreement about who would be the point of contact for the Myth, and who would be the point of contact for the police department so that we didn't have crosswires and we had consistency. Sergeant Mike Ny, who's come in tonight, has done an excellent job, I think, of being that point of contact on the city side. Again, without having three or four different people not really knowing what the story is. We thought that that was important. There was a couple of areas of disagreement. One of the areas of disagreement were that police staff felt that with issues occurring at the Myth, but also nationwide, that installed metal detectors at larger entertainment venues were a good idea. They do have the ability to pat search, and at times, they use metal wands. But we have concerns on the police side that that isn't maybe as accurate or as careful as we would want it to be. So, that was one area of disagreement. The other was, we talked about having a three-drink maximum. And in discussions with the representatives from the Myth, I did agree that it did not appear as though there was a practical way to do that because they've got so many different points of sale and so many different bartenders serving the crowd. It wasn't like they had, you know, a waitress to get come up and kind of more effectively monitor that. And so, at that point, I did withdraw that recommendation to see if these other recommendations would work. So, with that, I know that there is representatives from the ownership, the attorneys, and the manager and the security manager from the Myth, as well as their consultants are here as well. I have to say that I was happy that we ended up with so much agreement on some of the conditions in the operational action plan that hopefully are going to get the Myth in a, in a better spot. And I think the police department has made a commitment to working with them to ensure that it's a better and safer environment for the people that are patrons at the Myth and the surrounding community. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the council.
Council members, do you have any questions for the chief? And then, when we're done with questions with the chief, then we'll ask representatives from the Myth to come and speak as well. And then, we can ask questions then, too. Council member Juneman?
On recommendation number 22, have they agreed to that?
Members of the council, that is the one issue that they said they wanted some extra time to think about. Over the weekend, they did contact their liaison, Sergeant Ny, and they said that after consideration, they were agreeing to that. 1.5 ounces of alcohol is the national standard. Our concern, obviously, is that some probably pour about that amount, where others could pour more generously. It's a pretty busy, I would imagine, environment. And there's lots of things happening and people there. And so, they did ask for 30 days for trying to figure out a way to implement that, whether it's kind of the top-of-a-bottle type of measurement system, or, you know, your kind of old-school metal jigger, or however they're going to end up doing that. And I think that's certainly a reasonable request, but they did, they did agree to that.
Thank you.
Council member Smith?
Thank you. Couple of questions. One, actually, one big one. You know, we've had a host of different kinds of criminal activity happening there. Some of what I see in this plan is directly on point to that, as far as perhaps limiting drug abuse within the building, limiting alcohol use, trying to identify weapons before they enter. One of the things that was concerning to me was the amount of sexual assault that was happening within, within the building. Is there anything in here that you feel is going to address preventing that and keeping particularly women safe within, within the Myth?
Chief Nadeau?
Yeah. Mayor and members of the council, I would say yes. We talked a lot about the security, and they've added a lot of extra security. In fact, we had a couple of our officers that were up Friday night. They had a large event and kind of keeping an eye on the place and doing a walkthrough. They were very satisfied with the number of security guards for such a large event. In fact, they were impressed with a lot of the changes that had been made. There were some other smaller concerns that we're going to discuss with the Myth, as we would in the course of our discussions. But the number of security, I think, is important. Another factor that I think is important is that the first recommendation, which I think, you know, really gets us a long way, is, is creating a form and really doing some research on the types of acts that are coming in. And like I said, it's not any particular genre of music. It's more about have these acts had, you know, issues at other places they've been at. Or if they've been at the Myth in the past, and there's been issues, what steps are they taking to abate those types of issues that they don't happen in the future? We obviously are concerned about assaults and violence and issues of sexual violence. Those are large concerns for us. And I really feel as though the Myth has tried to make a commitment to address some of those issues within the club. And when our officers walked through last Friday, they said, security could plainly be seen, brightly colored shirts clearly identifying them. They were working throughout the crowd. And, you know, I think that they had a large event with a couple thousand people. And so, I think that they are taking some measure, some measured steps to do that. And, you know, we're hopeful that those can address some of those issues.
One point, Chief, too. I noticed that numbers nine and 10, I think that also addresses the concern that council member Smith raised about potential sexual assault at the venue. Do you want to explain, will that help to address the issue? We're talking about cameras and access to videos.
Yes. So, in the past, we've made some arrests up there for that type of activity. But we've had some difficulty getting the video. In one particular case, we weren't able to leave messages because the mailbox was full. And the video, apparently, at that time at least, rewrote itself every seven days. And so, evidence kind of disappeared. So, we wanted to make sure that not only is there good camera systems in place, but that we've got access to that video and that we can retrieve that video. So many times, well, not at the Myth necessarily, but in other places in town, we'll go there, and our officers literally have to record the video with their, with their iPhone. Because there just isn't a mechanism to be able to get that onto media that we can then have as evidence. And so, we talked about making sure that, you know, there's at least a great well-lit area when they walk in, so you've got some facial identification. So that, you know, as you're moving in the club, and it's dark, and there's a lot of people, you know, we'll do everything we can using video surveillance to try and make sure that we can identify people if they commit crime.
I think it's also important to have access within 24 hours of a police request for it. That's important for me. Council member Neblet?
Thank you, mayor. Chief Nadeau, I'm glad you mentioned the music genre and not just having a painting of Broadbush with particular kinds of genres in particular when we're talking about rap music. I've had citizens say to me, well, if they just didn't have those rap groups there, everything would be fine. And I just don't want people to think that when you put the label of rap on something, that it just means it's all bad. I'm going to show my rap knowledge now. When you talk about, I mean, you're talking about, you could talk about Jay-Z, you could talk about Common, you could talk about Chance the Rapper. All those are not what you would call horrible rap groups. But I think that the things that are in place in this agreement, if they're followed, should cut down on a lot, if not all, of the things that have happened in the past. Were there any incidents reported last, at this last event?
Mayor, members of the council, there was some issues of intoxication. I think, not to get into all the details, but one person, I think, had to be carried to their vehicle from the venue because they were intoxicated by her husband. Another person came out of the building, was puking all over the side of Ashley Furniture. And so, you know, we got two or 3,000 people. We don't expect that the Myth is going to be perfect. We just want to try and cut down on the incidents and make sure that we're being proactive and working with them to see that, you know, if problems do emerge, you know, how can we continue to get better and better and better so that there's less of a chance that somebody's going to be hurt or need to be hospitalized.
Thank you. Council member Juneman?
I think he had his light on first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't, couldn't, didn't see who came first. Council member Knutson?
Thank you, mayor. Just to make a quick comment, that I wasn't able to attend the April 8th meeting, but watched on TV and support everything that the council was asking for. Now, my specific comment is, as Councilman Nesbit suggested, when I told Public Service Officer Scott that essentially, we're providing the Myth owners with data. And good managers take data and turn it into information and action. So, whether genre doesn't make any difference to me. It's just a matter of data. So, data suggests that you need to step it up. One of the concerns I have here is essentially, we're managing their business for them. Every item on here, you know, should be attended to by a good business manager, if you're in this business. And so, I'm concerned and want to hear from these owners, gentlemen, operators, and so forth, and security people, you know, what's going to happen down the road to make sure that this business is operated the way it should be? So, it's a comment, and I guess the ultimate question is, is are we going to continue to put out this agenda, which is essentially managing their business?
Council member Juneman?
I have a question on the first one that there was disagreement about. And I'm wondering why there's disagreement, and if the chief thinks it's important, why we accept disagreement?
You're talking about the metal detector?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Chief, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah. Well, you know, I think that, you know, one of the things that I looked at was, you know, tying something like a metal detector to a liquor license, right? You know, I do think it's important. One of the observations our officers made last Friday, speaking of last Friday, was a gentleman walked out of the Myth towards the, out of the front, or the front entrance, and pulled a 175 of liquor out of the front of his pants. Now, I can tell you that had he gone through a metal detector, it would have sounded. Now, I don't, you know, I'm sure that they pat-searched a couple thousand people, right? So...
I can tell you that our police officers pat-search people and miss things all the time to get them to jail. They'll find weapons. They'll find narcotics. I think that pad searches are important. I just think they're a tool, like other things are a tool. However, like I said, with the level of cooperation that I've been shown in that last meeting with the ownership and the management of the Myth, if the council wanted to give them 90 days and then bring it back to you to see if that's something you want to mandate, or I would certainly be comfortable with that as well. I just, I think where safety is a concern at a venue, when you've got a lot of people going in, you know, my mind kind of goes to places around the nation where weapons have gotten into large spaces with lots of people and people have been harmed. So, some of those concerns aren't necessarily even specific to the Myth. It's just a general concern for the prevalence of, you know, acts of violence.
So, my question would be, I, his 90-day thing might be something we would consider, but I sort of like the answer as to why they disagree.
We can certainly ask the Myth's representatives when they get up here, too. Council member Smith, you had something else you wanted to say?
I did. Thank you for the opportunity. One of the issues we had when we were going through this with the Stargate was the use of contract security versus directly employed security and the vetting of those vendors. Are we confident that security personnel are direct employees and will remain direct employees? And regardless, do we have any guidelines in here as far as their hiring process for direct security, as well as any requirements if they do contract security, as far as having bonded licensed security providers at that time?
Mayor, members of the council, that was a question that we, that we talked about. We talked about training requirements for security. We talked about training requirements for people that were in the alcohol service side of it. We asked for a detailed training plan for security. They'd given us kind of the plan they were using. And that's one of the areas, I think, that we had said that we could beef up a little bit in writing as far as the training plan for their security. My understanding, and again, this is something certainly the Myth could talk to, is that most of the security that work at Myth actually work for Myth. And we did have a conversation about if they needed to expand to a private contractor, that they have to be licensed in the state of Minnesota to be legal. They're aware of that requirement. So, if there's some sort of a surge where they've got a large crowd and they can't handle that need for some reason, they're well aware of the fact that they have to be licensed. And I believe to be licensed, they have to be bonded.
Anything else, council members? Okay. Then, I know that there are representatives from the Myth here. Would you please step to the podium and give us your name and your title? Welcome to the council.
Thank you for having me. My name is Bill Skolnick. I'm an attorney with Skolnick and Joyce. I've had the opportunity to meet with the chief and Sergeant Ny and other members. I'm here to tell you that the Myth has taken tremendous steps to improve the issues that are being discussed. However, I wanted to tell you about where I think things can be improved, and that's in terms of communication. I respect Mr. Knutson, Council member Knutson's comments about, I don't think you want to run our business, my client's business. My client doesn't want you to run their business. That's, that's not the appropriate role. Of the, at one time, I think there were 38 items we were discussing. Of the, at one time, I think there were 38 items we were discussing. I said to the chief, "By making this look this way, it's like saying you need to do these 38 things." The Mith was already doing 34 of them. Three of them didn't apply. We haven't had bottle service in years. So, to be concerned about bottle service was one of those issues like, it sounds like it's a problem, but actually, there is no problem. But I do appreciate the security director, Director of Safety for the city, meeting with us, his staff. And I do tell you, we take things very seriously. In fact, we hired an expert in area, former Hennepin County Sheriff, Mr. Stanek, who's with us, who prepared a detailed report, which I'll have my partner, Mr. Bardwell. It's been already provided to...
We've already been provided the report?
You have.
And we've already read it.
Okay, great. And he's here to answer any questions of what he observed as a professional. So, I am, I am telling you that this is really more of a, you wanted the police chief to make sure that the Mith was doing what it needed to do to protect the safety of its patrons and they are. They, there are a couple of problems with the approach. This is not the Stargate. This is not a nightclub. It's an event center. It's open 50 to 90 days a year. That's all. They're open from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM and the building's emptied. So, it's not the typical bar nightclub that the Stargate plan was envisioned. We've never had a citation for underage drinking, service of an underage patron. So, there are a lot of issues that sound like they're problems, but they're problems in theory. In practice, the Mith has a top-notch security chief, Curvy, who's with us tonight and he's here to answer questions. The staff, the bartending staff, the security staff have been trained and are doing a really good job. And I don't ask you to take my word for it. We've had Sheriff Stanek, Mr. Stanek, come and observe a number of concerts from country to hip-hop to, you name the genre, to observe what it's like to have between 1,000 to 2,500 people coming through the doors and making sure there's order, fun and enjoyment and not chaos. So, I don't have much else to say in terms of my opening remarks. I have with me Kim Brocki, who is the licensee, an owner of Mith Live 2. I have with Mr. Brian Johnson, who's the manager, the overall general manager that can speak to many of the issues as well as our security chief, Mr. Bardwell, and of course, Mr. Stanek. I did want to comment about Ms. Juneman's question about the access to the security tapes.
No, that wasn't my question.
Well, actually, let me address it this way. They've been available within 24 hours, absolutely. We want to provide that to the community, to the law enforcement. And we are, we do. Never rejected a request, ever. So, like I said, there are things that might sound like there's a problem because you're suggesting something. The fact is, they're being done. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bardwell if he had any comments. If not, I'd like to have Mr. Stanek if he would like to come and be available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Juneman, well, why don't we wait and we can ask questions all at once?
Well, he misidentified my question.
Councilmember Juneman, go ahead.
Thank you. My question had to do with the disagreement over metal detectors.
Yes, in fact, you had more than one question and one of them was about metal detectors. And the issue about metal detectors is a question of cost and there's a corollary issue that isn't related to cost. Right now, we pat and search everyone that comes in. Getting 1,000 to 2,500 people through four or five doors, it's a question of timing, it's a question of efficacy. Are the security, the walkthrough security monitors what you're looking for? We do have the hand wands.
I know.
And the question is, are they really that effective? As you know, at the airports, they have them. People get through with things. I think everyone will acknowledge they're not perfect. And that question wasn't that we rejected it. We told them, "We are looking for cost-effective solutions and if they, if they aren't there, we want to implement them." It's not that we said, you know, we're against the idea. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stanek.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks for having me. And I, you know, about eight weeks ago, I was contacted, asked to take a look at this issue at the Mith and see what, see what I thought in terms of risk management, overall security. I can tell you, over the last eight weeks, I attended four different events. I had a chance to meet with Chief Nadeau and his staff several times and I've met certainly quite a bit with Mith management. I think overall, they do a pretty good job. And I say that from the perspective of 35 years of policing experience, both as a state legislator, a Minneapolis police officer, sheriff of a large county and a former commissioner of public safety. So, I've got a broad base of experience by which to draw on. And, you know, when I, when I took a look at the Mith, I looked at, you know, some of the easy things, some of the things that were identified in Chief Nadeau's OAC back to the Mith. And I think at the end of the day, there were 34 items that we took a look at. 32 of the items right off the bat were either done already in process or several were deleted because they just weren't applicable. But it really comes down to these last two, one, the 1.5 ounce pour standard, which you just addressed. And secondly, now, you're having some discussion, councilmembers and mayor, about magnetometers. That's what we call them. And, you know, there are several ways to look at this, quite honestly. Based on my experience, I think the Mith does a good job with their security. There are no less than three different levels of security to get into the Mith to begin with. The first starts in the parking lot. They have staff, security staff, that are well-marked with high-visibility green shirts, as the chief noted and pointed out. They screen people while they're waiting in line before they ever get into the building or into the front doors. They also have EMTs on staff. They had two when I started there. They now have three per show. Those EMTs are looking for signs of intoxication. They're looking for signs of impairment and that's what you would expect. Try and prevent it ever from, ever from beginning. Secondly, then, they enter that first set of doors, there's a double set of doors. They enter that first set of doors and they are hand-pat-searched. Everybody who comes in, without exception. There is no reentry. So, once you go into the building, you don't get a chance to leave. If you're escorted out because of misconduct or something that happens, you get big black Xs on the top of your hands and everybody knows there's no reentry. I saw several people try very hard reentry, you know, thought that they, whatever it might be. Staff has been very firm with them. I think the pat-searching does what it's supposed to do. I would, I wasn't there this last Friday night. I understand what Chief Nadeau said about a gentleman that came back out of the front doors and removed a 175-liter bottle of alcohol. I don't know that a metal or magnetometer would have detected that. That is not what those are for and that's part of the problem here. When you have a, when you have a hand or a pat search, it is direct face-to-face contact. "Ma'am, I'm, you know, I need you to open your purse. I need you to open your bag. Sir, I need you to unzip your jacket." You take a look, you do that pat search. I'd venture to say he was probably, this gentleman was intimidated, went back out. The staff allows him to do so and discard whatever they're not supposed to be bringing in to begin with. That includes alcohol, that includes weapons, that includes anything else. That's doing, that's doing the job. Magnetometers are not the end-all, be-all, but that's for Mith management, as I laid out to them to discuss. The cost of each one of those is about $8,500 to $12,000 for a quality one. You would have to have no less than three because they operate two points of entry, meaning two lines coming in the front door. And then, you've got to have something in terms of a backup because they're not, they are not infallible. So, you're talking about a $35,000 to $40,000 cost on the business and I've laid that back out to Mith management. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I just want to tell you that, you know, based on what I saw, I think they do a very nice job in terms of security. They have enhanced a number of different aspects of their operation. I've also had a chance, one-on-one, to talk with moms and grandparents, adults and some of the youth that attend the all-age events. And, you know, I, if you had a chance to read the report I provided, it talks about a mom from Wayzetta who dropped off her three, two teenage daughters and one friend at a concert venue and then while the kids were at the concert, she went out, had dinner, ended up at a caribou down the road and then the kids called, came back and picked up. And I talked with her, but why would, if these are the issues that have been articulated over the last eight weeks before the council, the issues of crime or disorderly conduct occurring at the Mith, why would mom from Wayzetta want to leave her three teenage daughters in an environment like that? But that's not what she said. She enjoys the Mith, her kids enjoy the Mith. I meant this to be a family-friendly event for the most part. I think, you know, you talk about some of the different genres of music. What would maybe be hip-hop seem to be less problems than maybe some of the country concerts that I saw, the two of them I attended. And mainly because they're more adults. It's not about the young people, it's more about the adults. But overall, I think the Mith does a fairly nice job. I'm happy to take any questions about what I saw, what I observed. I provided you about a 12-page, 13-page report. It goes fairly detailed, but I also took very seriously what Chief Nadeau and the Police Department laid out. I've known Chief Nadeau for a number of years professionally. I respect the job that he has to do and I want to be able to help bridge the gap in terms of these communications because really, at the end of the day, when I first walked in, that was very noticeable from minute one is that there seems to be some point where communications literally came to a stop. The four events that I attended, I did not see a Maplewood police car, squad car stop by. I saw Ramsey County Sheriff's Office, I saw Minnesota State Patrol and we had discussions about that this last Friday night. I understand Maplewood Police did stop by. They did a walk through the venue. That's the partnership that the Police Department and the business community need to have with each other and I hope that'll continue. I hope that was inspiring to, as a point moving forward, that that will continue. It'll keep both sides in terms of brokering a relationship so they can operate their business while at the same time, providing for public safety of both the staff and the residents, neighborhood and others who attend the venue. Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. This isn't actually specifically for you, but I think we need to walk back a little to why April 8th occurred because you, you, sir, addressed all the good things the Mith does when they are having an event and perhaps they have since April 8th. But on March 29, there was an incident that our chief had to bring to us that started this conversation. So, I don't want you or anyone else to think that this is something the chief dreamed up and we decided to hop on his wagon. There was an incident on March 29 that came from the Mith that was unacceptable in this community. That's how that conversation began. So, I just want it understood that we would, otherwise, we probably never would have gotten to that point. I don't want to have a match with you, but I don't want you to infer that we thought we should pick on somebody. That's not what this is about. The chief really wants this to be a good place for people to go. He has always expressed that, possibly more than some of the rest of us. So, it's not about that. We want you to succeed and we want you to do well, but we want you to do it so this community can rely on it as a good place. And as I pointed out that night, you are a mere block and a half from over 700 housing units. You are not near the Mall of America and you are not on the Strip in Las Vegas. You are over here on County Road D, near a lot of neighborhoods. So, our expectations might be a little higher. I don't know. I appreciate what you're doing. I'm glad to hear from the chief that this is occurring. I'm glad to hear from Mr. Stanek that he thinks you're doing the security part right. But I think a lot of this occurred since April 8th. So, I just want the timeline to be understood. I hope you keep going this direction. And the only reason I brought up the metal detector question is because it was in the chief's plan and I'm relying on him to say, "This is what we need in our community." So, as far as I'm concerned, the mayor referred to letting it go for, or the chief, I guess it was, for 90 days and see how things are going. That's fine. But you must bear in mind, every single time, whether it's 50 times a year or 150 times a year, in this community, we expect you to run a really good business where people have fun and bad things don't happen. That's all we're asking. And if you're going to deliver that, that's fine. But I think some of the credit goes to the fact that there was something that occurred that the chief brought to our attention. I don't want to discuss it anymore. I just want to know that you understand that I think you rose to the occasion as well as the chief. So, that's a good thing. But it needs to stay at that standard.
Councilmember Smith. Oh, Councilmember Knutson was next? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'm interested in that these 34 items, I'll take a look at them, but it seems like there's a common set of tactics that you've agreed to or said that you already have in place. I would say though, just based on the data that we had prior to April 8th, is that they weren't working very well. And so, what I guess, not arguing about back and forth on all of these items that really need to take place, it's really about outcomes. It's really about what you all can do, not on what we're going to do, because we know what we're going to do, you know, ultimately to protect our public. So, they're really, the ball is in your court. These are some items that we think that our professionals agree with. You agree with many of these items. It's really about outcomes and it's really something you have to do. You said you had these capabilities before and now you say, after your view, Mr. Stanek, that these things are in place, we expect the outcomes.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree 100% with Mr. Knutson. It's about outcomes and the reality is, we've had dozens and dozens of police calls to the Mith over the last several years, many of which involving significant felonies. And, Mr. Skolnick?
Mm-hmm.
I am tired of whether it's legal counsel or the Mith themselves, turning this back to the city, of talking in the newspaper about how you were blaming the city for not allowing our police officers to work at your facility as being a part of the problem, of you coming in and telling us that of the 34 things that we're asking you to do, 33 of them, you're already doing. If you're already doing them so well, why do we have dozens of calls and multiple allegations of felonies happening in the building? I understand changes have been made and I'm hoping those changes stick. I really am. And I'm hoping that this is going to be successful. But the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. And so, it is absolutely critical that this happens and I don't want to listen anymore to this being about poor communication or how we staff our police officers being at all germane as to why this stuff is happening. What is happening here, and I agree also with what Councilmember Knutson said earlier, we don't want to run your business. What we want to do is have a safe environment and have those good outcomes and have these numbers decrease. And we can count this stuff. We keep records and we can count it. And everything else that happens inside the building is up to you guys. We're not here to run it for you. We can't really enforce what's happening on this action plan inside your doors. That's up to you all. But if this is going to be a partnership, this has to be a partnership publicly and privately and it has to, and it has to be something where there is a commitment to those outcomes. And I really feel strongly, and I've been really frustrated with, with the way that, the tone with which your team has approached this in the media as well as in this meeting today.
Well, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, excuse me?
May I respond to his comment?
Just wait one second. I want to find out if there's any other comments or questions from the council. Then I can turn it back to you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that anyone else would... Is there anything else that anyone else would like to say? Okay, would you like to respond?
I would. I have never been quoted in any newspaper saying anything about the city of Maplewood, nor has my partner, I don't believe. And I would understand your frustration, but I think we need to focus on the data. We talked about the reports. There's a couple of salient facts. One, this licensee only obtained a license in December. A lot of the incidents you're referring to weren't on her watch. Didn't happen in 2019. Number two, we have got the police reports, and just when I met last week with the chief and his team, they handed us the one for a neighboring facility, a neighboring bar that doesn't have nearly, like one-tenth of the number of patrons, way more calls than the Myth. Way more calls, way more serious calls. We're doing as good as we can. We are actually improving. We are spending more money. We are putting more resources. We are working harder. So it would have been nice to hear maybe some sense of an appreciation for the fact that we are taking actions to run a very good business. We also submitted to the city the letters from the neighboring businesses who flourish when the Myth shows, the hotels that are sold out, the restaurants that are sold out. I personally have talked to a hotel developer that's trying to develop a hotel on that property. A lot of it depends on the existence of the Myth to make it economically viable and attractive, to bring that new development to this city. We're trying very hard, and I think we are succeeding. Yes, there's been a lot that's happened over the last three, four months. I'll give you that. And I think we should be judged on what we've done in response, and what's going to happen in the future. I really would like to hear from our manager. I'd like to have you hear from our manager, Mr. Jessen, and our security chief, just to address some of the issues that they've been taking, some of the actions they've been taking. Go ahead.
Sure.
Please state your name, and go ahead then.
Yeah, I'm Brian Jessen. I'm the general manager at the Myth. Since we were last in front of you, Kirby, my security director, myself, as well as the rest of the management team, have put a lot of time and a lot of effort. We really do want to be the same vision that you have for us, you know, with some place that you are proud to have in your city and a place that we're proud to operate. We approached everything since the 29th with our best ability to remove any previous biases and really look at things with a fresh set of eyes and say, hey, is there really a way that we can do better? And we did. We did honestly observe things that would create a safer environment, things that would improve our guest experience, and we've implemented some of those things. Some of those things are as simple as re-outfitting all of our security staff with new uniforms in a safety green that even in a low-light scenario is highly visible and easy for all of our patrons to see, clearly identified with large letters saying "staff" on the back. Speaking to the question earlier about adding outside resources to our security team, we have done that for select shows in a select area, only outside the venue. Our staff does an incredible job inside the venue, but one of the areas that Mr. Stanek brought to our attention that we could do a better job was outside. So instead of hiring a bunch of brand-new green people, which we do continue to do, but takes time and effort, we went to experts. We went to a company, bear with me, they're called Beefcake, Beefcake Security. They do several festivals across the country, including Bayfront Music Festival. They are the staff that provides pit security at the Armory in downtown Minneapolis. They are experts who know what is expected of a security team member. They are deployed between 8, 10, 20 at certain shows purely in our parking lots, not just the Myth lot, any lot that we have responsibility for, all the way over to Maplewood Mall. We want to do better. We are doing better. I have no desire to stand in front of you anymore. I plan on showing you that with our actions. Words are words, but I'm confident in what we're doing. I appreciate the partnership with Chief Nadeau, and I know that this is going to be it. This is going to be the last time that we're going to have to meet like this. And that's all I got to say. We're going to show you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kirby?
Hello? Council, my name is Kirby Sanchez. I'm the security director at Myth. Last time I was here, I wasn't feeling too good, so today I'm feeling a lot better. You know, as everybody said, we're doing everything we can, and we're doing it better and improving every aspect of our business from when people enter our parking lot, enter the door, and watch a show. I would love for the fact that if one of you would come to a show and actually see what we're doing there. I mean, I hear all the time the mayor going to cut ribbons here and put a shovel there. Come on by, put a wristband on. Watch a show. I mean, I, you know, if we have such a problem, then there's still a disconnect. You know, the other thing that we were provided that, you know, you guys are aware of, that we have a liaison. Technically, my liaison is an email address. I have no follow-up, other than just tell them, hey, we have a show coming up, this is the numbers, this is tickets, there you go, and no response back. When I did have patrol vehicles or officers that were working, they would stop by, they would see us, they would ask us questions, the proactive visits, the tour problems, the officers were there for that. Since this has happened, we've had zero proactive visits, except for this past Friday, when Star Party was there. I talked to Chief Nadeau about that. He does, he did know that, that, you know, that relationship did stop. And for me, being what I'm doing, security director, and needing police, if I do need them, or just stopping by, is huge for my business, huge for our business, which is very unfortunate. Every other venue, well, mostly all venues, you know, with our numbers, have police officers. Some of our riders, our tours that come in there require that we have police. Well, we can't provide that service. I go to the Aldridge Arena, and I know it's a Ramsey County house, but they have six, eight, 10, 12 officers there that are doing 3,000, 4,000 people. Do their action plan have the same actions that we're doing? No. You know, they sell buckets of beer to one person, said, here you go. They pat down people, they don't have metro meters there. I feel that my staff go above and beyond to provide a safe environment. And as far as what happened the March...
29th.
29th. Yes, it happened outside a parking lot. Our issue was outside the parking lot, which we've, we've given more staff for that issue.
I saw that.
So, you know, all the things that we talked about were inside things, underage drinking, assault, stuff like that. Well, we can't necessarily control what happens outside, just be more proactive, and I would love to talk to Chief Nadeau and figure out what are the action plans if we do have another incident like that. You know, I have tours that come up, what is your action for an active shooter? Well, that's something that I would love to talk to Maplewood about. What should we do? What should we do if there's another incident like that, which hopefully, knock on wood, it doesn't happen again? But you never know, in the world that we live in today, things happen. Doesn't matter what type of genre of music, what's going on, anything like that. You know, the things that are going around in town right now with how many overdoses have been statewide, it's huge. And the only thing that we can do is provide medical care there as fast as possible to defeat this problem. You know, shootings that are happening here in St. Paul, Minneapolis, it's all over. You know, there was just one on the border of Roseville, Roseville, Maplewood, and St. Paul, last night, you know? So I guess, you know, I take this very seriously. I've only been the security manager there for a year and six months. I've been in the business since I was 18. I'm 36 now. I know how things run. I've done festivals, and I take pride in what I do, and I'm very concerned with what I do. And when this all happened, I was blaming myself, like, what could I have done better? Did I do everything okay? And, you know, luckily, I have good people here to tell me, you did everything right, and you're doing everything right, and we're going to give you some input and make things better, not because I'm doing them wrong, but just because it's always learning, that you're going to teach, keep on going and make it better and better and better. Does anybody have questions for me?
I know we have some other comments. I don't know the order, so I'm just going to pick. Councilmember Smith.
Lucky you. Look, I think, I know you guys are doing a lot of new stuff, and I do recognize, and I actually said that before, and I think, I'm hoping it works, right? And I'm hoping this goes well. I think it's really important that we continue to show results. I also know that things might happen, right? It's about patterns of behavior, and it's about patterns of outcomes that I think I'm most concerned about. And, you know, it's, that was the issue we were up against, I think, at Stargate, and I think it's the issue that we're concerned about here, are those patterns of behavior. And I'm excited that, that changes have been made, that security is up, that it sounds like both the chief and Mr. Stanek and other experts are feeling good about that. That makes me feel good about that. I just want to make it really clear, though, that this is not the first time we've been here with the Myth, and I realize you're a new owner, but it's still an institution within the city that has history, and that whether you're the owner or not, that matters. And so I think it's just really critical that we work together, turn it around. And I'll put myself out there, too, to say, if there are places of reasonable partnership where you feel the city's falling down on you, I'm willing to take that phone call, right? But there are certain things that we're not positioned to do, that we've made clear as far as making officers available off-duty and things like that. We're going to be clear about that. But if there are places where we can improve, and you're not getting what you need out of the chief, I will be happy to take that phone call and work with you to make that happen. But what I don't want to have keep happening is coming back to how there's external things that have caused these problems, because it's definitely, there's a common denominator, right? So I'm hoping for the best out of this, and I do appreciate the work you're doing, and I do recognize that work. I just hope it continues to keep working.
Councilmember Diblet.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really glad to hear from the manager. It makes me, because you were here the last time, I believe what you're saying, you're really giving it a good shot. But I felt kind of like Councilmember Juneman at the beginning, when I thought, am I in some alternative universe here? There were things that happened that brought us to this place, but I'm glad you're working on it. We don't want you to leave. We want you to be successful. And if you continue to do the things that you're doing, I believe that you will be successful. So I appreciate hearing from you. I appreciate hearing from both of you, because you were here last time. And it is a learning process. Everything is. Every hiccup is a learning process. So you're obviously doing something a lot better than you were when you got here the first time, or when you got here the first time I was here, okay? So just keep it up. Keep it up.
Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. In your report that we received, I'm happy to see that you have added, it says 20 new security staff. That's a significant number. Obviously, that was needed. And that you have reassigned security in the parking lot, that's a good thing, obviously. I have a question...
May I clarify that real quick?
Sure.
So we added up to 20...
Right. Depending on the size of the crowd.
To the crowd.
You made that clear last time.
Typically for the outside security. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
I have a question for our attorney, I believe. On page five of this report, it says, referring to the Myth parking lot and the Maplewood Mall parking lot, and then the three that had, I believe, parking agreements at some point in time, the Ashley Furniture parking lot, the Maplewood Public Library, and the abandoned Toys R Us. It says in bold print, which I presume means that's his idea, doesn't mean it's our idea, but is this a fact? These lots should be patrolled and secured by the Maplewood Police Department? Myth has no responsibility for public safety in these three areas. You mean, they're bringing cars in for their stuff, and we're supposed to send our cops to patrol those three lots? I'm confused.
Chief, would you like to respond to that, please?
I'll let the attorney do it, too.
Yeah, Mayor members of the council, actually, there's a couple of things I'd like to respond to, if I could. The, I think that the Myth's point is that they're going to be assigning security personnel to the lots they contract with. My assumption is if they see people parking in areas where they're not supposed to be and they're not contracted, they'll probably try and wave them to the lots that they are patrolling. You know, that there would be people parking in places they weren't supposed to is probably not that unusual, and we do try and have a presence when we know that there's a large crowd up there. If I could, Mayor, one of the things that was referenced by Mr. Skolnik was underage drinking and the fact that the Myth has never been cited for that in the past. To say that they've never been cited does not mean that there's never been issues with underage drinking. I think anytime you have people 18 to 21, a couple thousand at a time, you're going to have issues with underage drinking, whether they purchased the drink or not. And so some of these things that are in the action plan are in there intentionally. I don't know that we've had any issues necessarily with people not being carded or with underage people being served. That doesn't mean they don't have access to alcohol and that they shouldn't be watching out for that. Another thing that was referenced was a deterioration in the relationship, and I really certainly agree with that. I think that, you know, when I got here, and there was a couple of events that required four and five different cities in the county to have to respond with law enforcement services, and we started writing letters to them with what our concerns were, followed up by some media stories that were initiated by the representatives of the Myth. I think that there was a, you know, clearly, there was a deterioration of the relationship. And, you know, I think that from the city's side, we're committed to that. And Mr. Jessen, Mr. Sanchez, I think, have been very forthcoming. This discussion kind of started with, you know, maybe that they weren't responsible or that there was nothing they could do. I think they have made significant changes. I think they've committed to continuing to learn and to implement these types of changes in the future, and I'm very encouraged by that. One of the things that I was encouraged by was, there was an act that came to town, and we received numerous emails and concerns from citizens, and when we had contact with the Myth, they made the decision to cancel that particular show in the interest of public safety, and I think that that's a big step. More recently, I think in our last meeting, we showed a video of what I'm going to call a riot that occurred in December of 2017, and that same performer is going to, is scheduled to be at the Myth in July. So my question for the Myth representatives, you know, trying to keep this communication clear, is there was an issue the last time that this person came that resulted in some pretty dangerous behavior? So what steps are going to be taken to ensure that that doesn't happen again in the future? And I think that keeping that kind of communication going, making sure that, you know, we're exchanging information, making sure that everyone's on the same page about the fact that if there's an act that comes in that we have concerns about, that we're going to take the appropriate steps, are really all that the city's, you know, concerned with, as far as the Myth.
Thank you, Councilmember Juneman. Did you have something more?
Yes, thank you. I think that's verified what I was asking, but I can't resist, so I won't. I think this conversation would have gone worlds better with the absence of attorneys. I may as well say it. They speak just fine for themselves. We can communicate with each other. I've never really liked attorneys a whole lot, anyway, but this gets in the way. The inferences and things came from you. Let them speak. We're talking to each other now, and the chief's talking with them. That's what we want. To be blunt, stay away next time. To be blunt, stay away next time. We can talk to these people. They know what to say. You don't need to caution them about tripping... You don't need to caution them about tripping over their tongues, I don't think. But I enjoy the fact that they could speak for themselves and tell us what they're actually doing. They're doing it. You're not. We need to hear from the people who do it. If they make a mistake, they come and say, we made a mistake, we'll try and help them with the chief, fix it. We don't need your help. Maybe they do, but we don't. I'm serious. I'm not being flip. They can, that's why conversations get convoluted. They pay you to get up here and say something that we don't even care if we hear, quite frankly, because they do it. They told us what they had done, and they are saying to us they want it to be right. That's what we need to hear. We need them to talk with him and Sergeant Nye. That's what we need, because we want them to be good at what they do, and our community to be glad they're here.
I'm gonna wrap up this conversation with some comments. I wanted to hear what my fellow councilmembers had to say. I wanted to hear what the chief had to say. It would have been my preference, as the mayor, to have completely avoided all of this, but there was a need to bring this before the council, because we sit up here as elected officials to protect our community, to make good decisions on behalf of our community, and to make the hard calls. And we did just that. We issued a liquor license, which was our action, our decision to issue a liquor license to Ms. Brokey in December of 2018. Within three months of issuing that liquor license, there was a serious incident at your venue that was related to your venue. We intervened because that wasn't acceptable in our community, and it won't be acceptable in our community. What we have now is an operational action plan. I'm optimistic. I'm an optimistic person, and I'm going to expect that you will follow that operational action plan. I think our chief has done a remarkable job, as has Sergeant Nye, in working through this so that we all have a level playing field. We know what we expect of you. And I just want to remind our councilmembers and you that there is a recommendation, we are going to be making a motion tonight, and we're going to be either, well, I don't know what, how we're going to vote, but we're gonna be taking some action. But the recommendation, and I will just remind you, I'm going to read it, that the recommendation is, upon evidence of substantial noncompliance with the requirements outlined in the above operational action plan that you have, in essence, agreed to, the chief of police is authorized to order the closure of the business until the next available council meeting, at which time steps and/or sanctions will be considered. So, there is some teeth here. There are some consequences, some potential consequences. I am optimistic that you will make the changes that have been outlined, that you are agreeing to, with our public safety director, because his charge, we've hired him to make sure that our community is as safe as it possibly can be. We welcome you as business owners in our community. We think that you're an asset. But really, I concur with Councilmember Knutson and Councilmember Smith, that it's all about outcomes, because the outcomes, what you do in terms of managing your business, will determine whether or not there are any sanctions, or there are any further actions. I hope that there won't be. I really do. So, with that being said, I am going to make a motion to approve the Myth operational action plan with the proviso that there is no agreement right now concerning only the metal detectors, that we will accept as a council the Myth operational action plan with the proviso that we come back in 90 days and we reconsider the metal detector portion of it. But tonight, this council will take action on the operational action plan that you have agreed to with our police chief. And so, with that, councilmembers, I will make that motion.
Second.
Mayor Abrams.
I think I heard Councilmember Juneman second that first.
Yep.
The motion has been made and seconded. City Clerk Sin, did you get that motion? It's a little bit long, I know. I'm sorry. You'll have to listen to that again, but I think I made my point. Any further discussion, councilmembers? No. Any further comments, discussion, councilmembers? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. You can have a seat.
I would like to note that I was-
Councilmembers, we are moving on to our next agenda item. We are done. Thank you. The motion has been passed.
Not given an opportunity to respond.
We have been, we've passed the motion. Thank you. Sit down, please. And we are moving on to our last agenda item. Oh, second to the last, I'm sorry. We have a discussion, new business item concerning the Maplewood Moose Lodge. And Mr. Thompson, this is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, we have a development application from the Moose Lodge to construct a new facility at 3033 Hazelwood Street in the northwest part of town. If I can get the presentation document pulled up. So, the site, and these are just the exhibits that were included in your packet, the site is located at the intersection of County Road D and Hazelwood Street. It's a vacant parcel that was previously owned by the city, that the city sold to the Moose Lodge for relocation of their facility from the Gladstone neighborhood to this site. The site today is Zoned Light Manufacturing, and you can see just from the, the location map on your screen that there are some residential properties in the immediate area. There's an apartment building directly to the east, which is the closest residential property. There are some detached townhomes kind of to the southeast, and then there's also the senior cooperative building, Cardinal Point, directly to the south of the site. Again, this exhibit was included in your packet, but an important note is that the site is encumbered by a number of utility easements, most of which are related to the high-tension power lines that are existing along the south side. So, this shows kind of those three easements that exist on the south side, and this is what's largely driving the proposed site plan, since parking areas and landscaping may be allowed within those easement areas. Structures such as the building would not be permitted within those easements to avoid the, the conflicts from those utilities. So, this is the proposed site plan. The parking lot, there'd be a 48-stall parking lot that can be constructed on the south half of the property, which would have a single access, drive access location from Hazelwood Street. The building, then, would be about 5,000 square feet. It's a single-story, single-tenant building for the Moose Lodge. Again, it's about 5,000 square feet. And then the area directly west, or to the left-hand side of the, of the site plan is the, would be an outdoor horseshoe pit, which is an outdoor activity that's associated with the club. And then, in terms of the other site plan element, there is an infiltration basin for stormwater treatment located on the far north side of the property. These elevations were also included in your packet. These are just the exterior renderings for the proposed building. As, again, it's a single-story building. The maximum height at any point is 19 feet, and the primary materials are the texture panel, which is kind of that brown, brown color. And then there's a stone veneer base, which is an accent material, some metal, the maroon color is kind of a metal shake, and then it would also have a metal roof. It was noted in your report, these are the revised plans that were based on some of the recommendations made by the Community Development, Community Design Review Board during its review of the project. So, then it just shows all four sides of the building having similar material and a similar composition on, on all four sides. Again, they also added some windows to the elevations based on the CDRB's comments. There are four items before the council tonight for your review and approval. The first is a conditional use permit for a commercial building located within 350 feet of a residential property line. The second is for a conditional use permit for a place of amusement, so that's just noting that the, the lodge business itself is a recreation or assembly use, and that requires a conditional use permit. The fourth is just to approve a reduced setback from the pipeline easement, noting that the building would not be located in the easement, but would be less than the 100-foot setback that our ordinance dictates. And lastly, is the design review. So, the item was reviewed by both the Planning Commission and the CDRB at their meetings on May 21st. We have drafted in your packet a resolution which would approve all of the items that are before the council this evening with those conditions that are recommended by city staff, as well as those that were recommended by the Planning Commission and the CDRB. With that, I believe there's a representative of the Planning Commission here tonight. The applicant is also here tonight, if there are any questions. And I'm, Mayor, happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
Not yet.
Pardon me?
Not until we hear from the Planning Commission. Or isn't there anyone? No? Okay.
Is anyone here from the Planning Commission? I don't see anyone from the Planning Commission. Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. We have a plethora of resident comments, and I did go through them. The predominant thought, other than they don't want anything else up there, but that's been going on since we built Legacy Village, you know, the people over on, the people across Beam Avenue didn't want Legacy Village, and the people in Legacy Village didn't want Conifer Ridge, and Conifer Ridge didn't want, you know, that, that's just the bowling pin effect. But the predominant concern is increased traffic, so I just need a verification that both Hazelwood and D can manage this traffic, and there were a couple of comments about, will we need a light at D and Hazelwood, and can we say that if that becomes apparent, what we would do about it? Because that might settle some of those questions.
Mayor and council-
Love, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Apologize about that.
No.
Mayor and council, so as part of our engineering review, our assistant city engineer reached out to Ramsey County, and with, given all the different developments, not just because Moose Lodge is going in, but all the different ones, they're gonna do a signal analysis of the intersection. So, this is essentially like what we do with our stop signs, where we're gonna study it to see if it meets the warrants for a signal. If it does meet the warrants for a signal, then we'll begin working with the county on the timing, the funding, and the cost of that. The city has one leg of the intersection typically. We are on the hook for about a third of, you know, for that leg, so a third of the signal intersection. So, the county has agreed to do that, and, again, that's because of all the development in the area, not specifically Moose Lodge.
Thank you. And that, just so people know, we can't put up a stop sign or a stoplight without the county. They carry the big stick when it comes to that. One more, Mayor?
Certainly, go ahead.
Thank you. The other predominant comment, that means it appeared more than twice, was about noise. Some people think they're gonna have loud music parties. The Moose must be wilder than I thought they were. And then their horseshoe pits, somehow I can't imagine them being out there at midnight pitching horseshoes, but I might be wrong. So, can we verify those things?
Mr. Thompson.
Mayor and, and Councilmember Juneman, so, a couple of things. One, there is a condition in your draft resolution which would restrict any outdoor activities that have to cease by 9:00 PM. So, that was just to mitigate any sort of adverse noise impacts on adjacent properties. And then certainly, the applicant could address kind of the operation of their business.
Right. Okay. And then finally, and I just, I don't think there's anything that you can base this on, but for some reason, people want to say, now we're moving a bar into residential neighborhoods, so I didn't realize the Moose hung around the bar and then stumbled into the neighborhood. So, if that's what you guys do, I'm surprised. But anyway, we aren't really just classifying this as a bar, are we? This isn't a club, and they do events.
It's a family center.
We're gonna have you have an opportunity to come up in just a moment, but we just want to get staff questions first, so hold off for just a second.
Sure. Mayor and council, so, we have not class, and we have reviewed this under the zoning ordinance. We have not defined this either as a restaurant or as a bar. We've, that's why we're calling out the conditional use permit for the, I've gotta get the exact terms, place of amusement, recreation, or assembly. That, I believe they, they would likely have to apply for a club liquor license, just for, for that component of their business, but we're not calling it or classifying it under our ordinance as a, as a bar.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well. Mr. Love, in terms of the Ramsey County's review for a stoplight at Hazelwood and D, when would that take place? And I, I understand it's not just about the Moose Lodge. One of the things that, that I'm thinking about as well is the Trails Edge, which is going in there, and that'll be 152 apartments right there. So, I think it's clearly appropriate to look at whether or not the guidelines are met for a stoplight, but when will the county do that?
Mayor and council, I reached out to county today. I was unfortunately not able to get ahold of the person that was, would be looking at this. But, again, it would, it's in the report that the county has agreed to do that, so I would imagine they, they would start doing that as soon as possible, as they can fit it into their schedule. But I will follow up with the county, find out that timeline, and I'll certainly let the council know.
And I think, too, if they know that, that the Trails Edge is going in there, that they have to take that into consideration as well, because that will change the dynamics there, too.
Mayor and council, yep, and it is noted that it is because of all the different proposed, you know, or all the developments that have been and are going into there.
Conifer Ridge has gone in over in that area, and sure, certainly.
So, they very much agreed that it was due to those recent developments, you know, the need to do a study of that intersection has risen now.
Thank you. I also read all of the resident comments and some concerns, and I want to raise a question with our police chief. In terms of the Moose Lodge, there was some comments, some questions about the kinds of activity and alcohol and that type of thing going on at the Moose Lodge. The Moose Lodge is already in Maplewood. So, can you tell me just generally what has been the police experience with the current Moose Lodge, where it is over near Frost English right now?
Mayor, members of the council, at your request, I actually looked at the last four years. That's when we changed over our record system, so I could've looked at 10 years, but that would've been more work. So, I delved into the last four years.
Four years is good.
And, you know, you saw your kind of smattering of regular types of police calls, a question they would have, maybe a car that was broken into overnight type of thing, but really nothing related to alcohol, nothing related to assaults or disorderly behavior, nothing on that level, really, I mean, for four years, which, you know, for a liquor-serving establishment to go that long without having, you know, at least a couple of those types of calls would be, would be great, so.
And the fact that that, the Moose Lodge is currently located in a residential neighborhood as well is, I think, another factor, at least in, when I was reading it, right, it's very close to a residential neighborhood, okay? Would someone from the Moose Lodge like to come and, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Smith has a question, and then we'll get to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, up until recently, was a relatively close neighbor to the Moose Lodge in Gladstone. I lived right on Lake Phalen, and I can say they're a great neighbor. I mean, there's, I, I read through the concerns a lot of the residents brought up, and, you know, when you, when you're not sure, those are all fair concerns, but, you know, I, I actually rarely saw people playing horseshoes, much less whether that was really an issue late at night. You know, I think the parking issue is not a big deal. They had a huge lot at the old place, and it was rarely even close to full. So, I, I think that the plan seems really reasonable, you know, and they take good care of the building, and so I, I really, I'm not real concerned about those, just from my own personal experience living near and being a neighbor of the Moose Lodge. So, that's my two cents on it.
Thank you for that. Would a representative from the Moose Lodge like to address the council, please?
I'm Gary Leonard. I'm the administrator. I've been there five years now.
Welcome.
We've been here since 1964. I've been, the four years I've been here, we've had two calls there. They were both medical emergencies. One was a death, and one was a insulin reaction. We kind of cater to the elderly. We have polka dances every Sunday. We serve meals. We're a fraternal organization. We donate money to kids in Indiana that are, you know, homeless, pretty much. We closed down early. We sold you the three acres we used to be at, and we bought the two acres we're living in now, with, with, I was hoping some kind of, you know-
Thank you.
Pat me on the back, you pat you in the back. We have any questions? I mean, we, we want to be part of this community, you know. And I met the people at Cardinal Point, they addressed all their issues, and I answered them the best I could. But, you know, as far as the traffic, isn't the bus light rail going through the rapid bus? So, it's not gonna be us, it's that rapid bus that's gonna be causing problems, I believe.
Councilmembers, any other questions? Councilmember Neblet.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I don't really have a-
I don't, I don't really have a question, um, a comment, I too live near the Moose Lodge, or the current Moose Lodge, or where it was, um, and have attended a couple of graduation parties there, um, have never known them to be anything but good neighbors. Um, and I think sometimes when you don't have experience with, um, an organization, you don't know what to expect. Um, but I'm confident you'll be good neighbors.
We do a lot of community events. Uh, we open our building for, like Johnson High School, they have their hockey year-end parties there, uh, we have funerals there, we have birthday parties, retirements. It's a community center, really, it is, but you have to be a member to come in. So right there, you don't get a bunch of riffraff coming in, you have to, well, you have to have a pass to get in, you do.
You have handpicked riffraff.
We kinda patrol ourselves, you know. We do-
Yeah, guess we won't be able to go, correct?
Thank you.
I could get you a disco, maybe.
Thank you. Are there any residents who would like to speak?
They're all with me.
They're all with you? Okay, then. Uh, seeing no other questions, no lights on, councilmembers, we have multiple motions here. Uh, they're on page 135. We have two motions, A and B.
Mayor, I move to approve the attached conditional use permit resolution for the new Maplewood Moose Lodge Club Building as places of amusement, recreation, or assembly, and buildings erected in the light manufacturing zoning district within 350 feet of a residential district require a conditional use permit.
Second.
There's been a motion by Smith, and I don't think I have to read it again, uh, and seconded by Juneman, uh, to approve the attached conditional use permit. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I also move to approve the design plans, date stamped May 6, 2019, and the revised landscape plan and building elevation submitting on May 24, 2019, and attached to this report for the new 5,000-square-foot Maplewood Moose Lodge Club Building at 303 Hazelwood Street North, approval is subject, uh, to the applicant doing the following. One, repeat this review in two years if the city has not issued a building, a building permit for this project.
Can we just say, maybe, I'll dig-
The following five conditions, as noted, uh-
It's eight conditions.
I'm sorry, following eight conditions with subconditions, as noted in today's-
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juneman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
I was really hoping to hear myself talk for a while, so I'm very disappointed.
That was an FM voice, thank you very much.
Yeah.
The only condition is we have to be invited to the grand opening.
Mm-hmm.
We'd like to do ribbon cuttings. So, welcome, and-
We want an invitation.
We'll be excited to see your building going up.
I've also been told there are some motorcycle rides that I should probably get invited to.
Thank you, everyone.
Emails on the website.
And we are moving on our agenda, we have two other items left, we've got an HVAC upgrade, and we have a report from our auditor.
You guys, it's an HVAC upgrade, you wanna go?
Mr. Love, you're no doubt talking about the HVAC upgrade.
That's, Mayor and Council, I know this is the item you've been waiting for all night, so, uh-
Yes, we have.
This in the auditor's report.
Yes, so this is the HVAC, which is the Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Unit on our Public Works Building. It was identified in our 2015 Study of City Facilities as being in need of replacement, and is also included for 2019 in the Capital Improvement Plan. So really, there's two, two items here for you tonight. One is, uh, a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications. So it's really giving us, uh, the go-ahead to go ahead and have this designed. Um, it would obviously be back, uh, before you, before we, to ask for, uh, permission to, uh, put it out for bid. So, this isn't a full approval of the whole project. The other part is to authorize the use of LHB, which is one of our new consultants in our consultant pool, uh, for the Professional Design Inspection and Contract Administration. So, that amount is $27,785, um, for those professional services, and obviously, if something were to go awry and we were not to proceed forward, uh, we wouldn't be reimbursing them for the whole thing, 'cause that, this is really the contract to take us from beginning to end. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Juneman, you have an HVAC question?
I have only one, yes, I do. I have only one question. You mean, you're actually gonna replace the thing where you smell fumes from the garage upstairs, and where the park people freeze and the other people fry?
Well, it's, it's certainly going to help with some of that, yes.
I'm glad to hear that.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution authorizing preparation of plans and specifications for the 1902 Building HVAC Upgrade City Project 1918.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juneman, a motion to approve the resolution authorizing preparation of plans and specifications for the HVAC upgrade. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor, further move to authorize the use of LHB Incorporated for Professional Design Inspection and Contract Administration Services, and to further authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign the attached work order with LHB Incorporated.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juneman, she just puts a mo, just a fraction ahead of you.
Practice.
To authorize the use of the LHB Inc. for Professional Design Inspection and Contract Services. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now, we have our auditor.
Ah, now here's the real highlight of the evening, woo-hoo!
Uh, Ms. Paul Seth, would you like to start off, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, we have our external auditors here tonight from Bergen KDV. City Clerk Sint is passing out the reports that he will be, um, presenting tonight, the 2018, um, financial report.
Is your microphone on? It's really hard to hear over here.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That'll work.
Um, I, I did wanna mention that, um, the partner, Matt Mayer, was going to be here tonight, but had a family emergency, so we had to scramble, we apologize for moving the, uh, moving the agenda item to the end, but, uh, Michael Basil is here, he was the senior audit manager, so he is very familiar with the audit, but he had another engagement tonight as well, so, he's scrambling to get here to, uh, present this to you, and he's promised that in the interest of the time that we have left, that he'll be brief. So this is Michael Basil from Bergen KDV.
So he's gonna be scintillating in a small amount of time, is that the idea?
Okay. Welcome to the council.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for inviting me here today to discuss the results of your audit, um, and also thank you for accommodating the situation that we had to, uh, allow me to, to get here at this time tonight. So, um, in the interest of time, I'll, I'll try to keep it short, so maybe, you know, 15, 20 minutes instead of an hour.
Oh, jeez.
I'm kidding.
You know, before we start, we're getting a little silly up here, I know, but we really, this is important business. I just wanna, uh, advise council that, uh, Councilmember Juneman and myself, uh, comprised the audit committee, and we met, uh, with Michael, uh, was it two weeks ago? Something like that?
Yeah.
Uh, and had a free and open discussion with him, uh, and he was very informative, and, uh, really, I can speak for, I think, both of us, that it was a very, uh, transparent discussion, and we feel very comfortable about, uh, the finances of our city, and how things are being managed financially, uh, and, Councilmember Juneman, do you wanna add anything to that?
No, I agree, and it was, it was a very good discussion. We had questions, and they explained really well, and it was just very, it was very relaxed, it was wonderful, we, you know, and this is from a lady who doesn't like the audit, so, you know, you did a good job, Vanessa.
And when we have that audit committee, uh, we'd meet with the, um, accountants separately, there's no staff with us, so that we can ask any questions that we want, we went over these documents already, uh, so, anyway, thank you.
So we probably won't be scintillating tonight.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so you have, uh, three documents in front of you, one is the actual financial statement, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Uh, there's a report on government auditing standards and Minnesota legal compliance, so it's a, a compliance report, and then a communications letter, which is kind of a summary of the, of the highlights of, of the main, um, funds and main activity of the city for the year. And so what I'm gonna do, um, is I'm gonna go through a PowerPoint presentation here, um, most of it is related to the communications letter, so if you wanna follow along there, you can as well, all of the graphs that are in there are on the PowerPoint as well. Uh, but first, I'm gonna start out with the independent auditor's report, so ultimately, this is what you're looking for in an audit, is an opinion on the financial statements themselves. And, uh, what we do provide is an unmodified or clean opinion, this is the best opinion that we are able to offer, so that's something that you should be looking for each year, and we did provide that, um, this year. Uh, because of, uh, some state and federal grants that you receive, we are also required to do our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, so, a yellow book audit, um, and so we have to test compliance with government auditing standards as a result of that, and we did do that, and we had no compliance issues as a result of, of, of that test work as well. And then finally, uh, we are also required to look at specific Minnesota state statutes that the Office of the State Auditor wants us to look at, um, and we did not find any compliance reports, uh, within, um, that test work either. So overall, a really nice, uh, clean audit from a compliance standpoint, and then even what you'll notice, too, if you look within the communications letter, is that there are no internal control findings either, so no material weaknesses, um, no significant deficiencies that need to be reported, um, to, um, the council. So, um, a really nice overall clean, clean, um, report from a compliance and internal control standpoint. Um, when we look next, we'll start it with the General Fund to look at some financial information. Ultimately, the city council's role, um, within finances to approve a budget, and then, um, we have that column on the left here on the revenue side, and then management's responsibility is to, um, um, take that budget that was, uh, approved by the city council and execute it. And so that's the middle column here, excuse me, the column, uh, second column from the left, the actual column. And then we have a couple of, of over-under, um, variances to show you where, where you hit and where you missed the budget a little bit. So, overall, on the revenue side, um, you were budgeted, uh, $20.8 million, you came in at act, at, uh, $20.6 million in revenues and transfers and other sources, so within 1.2 percent. So that's actually really good, um, on a $20 million budget. Um, 2 percent and under is, is excellent as far as, um, looking at where, where you come in within your budget. When you look at the, um, the third column from the left, um, the variance column, the biggest number that sticks out is your tax revenue, which came in under budget, uh, 500, 578,000, and that's really the result of some tax petitions that are outstanding, that were outstanding at year-end, and that revenue won't be recognized, um, until and if, um, the tax petitions go through. On the expenditure side, um, same type of thing here, we have your budget, um, $20.7 million, you actually came in at $20.2 million, so about $502,000 under budget, so that's about a 2.4 percent variance, uh, really good, especially coming in under budget. Uh, the biggest line item that was under was in the, in the police, um, function, which was 378,000, and the majority of that was, was, was a result of just, um, temporary, um, unfilled positions within the police department. When we look at overall operations and health of the general fund, we look at the graph here, and you see that the, the green chart, or the green graph each year, um, except for back in 2014, which is, this represents revenues and came in under your expenditure amount, which is the blue graph or the middle chart in there. Um, so, um, but each year, the revenues, your, your fund balance, um, for the most part did increase, and that's as a result of transfers that are coming in for, um, administrative fees and other, um, other operating-type, um, transfers that are coming in from other funds to help support the general fund activity. Um, but overall, at the end of the year, your unassigned fund balance, which is essentially your full, your whole fund balance, I think, uh, there's about $8,000 that's, that's committed, um, but your unassigned fund balance then is just under 8.8 million, and that represents 44.2 percent of your, um, revenue, based on current, the current year revenue. And it is also, um, about 43.4 percent of your expenditures, based on the current year expenditures, and that is, uh, within the city's new policy on what your, um, what your goals are, of a minimum of 40 percent with a desired level, um, of 50 percent. So overall, that, that level, um, as far as a percentage of revenue, has been really consistent over the last five years, with a low of 48, 40.8 percent, um, and a high of 45 percent last year. When we look, uh, at a little bit more detail, um, revenues overall were up about 1.1 million from last year, 6 percent. Intergovernmental was the biggest increase, with about an $882,000 increase, and this, this was mostly, um, LGA, your local government aid, where you allocated more to the general fund than you have in the past, um, in 2018. These next two charts are just a comparison between 2018 and 2017 revenues, as far as the source, um, of revenues for, for the city, and taxes makes up the majority of that, at 74.7 percent. Um, there was not a significant change as far as the source, um, between the 2017 and 2018, except for intergovernmental, with that increase in LGA aid that was coded to the general fund. Each of the other sources did decrease, um, respectively, because of that increase in intergovernmental revenue. When we look at expenditures, overall, there was an increase of $882,000 from last year, or about 4.6 percent. Uh, the largest increases were in administrative and finance, and that was really just because of, uh, um, the citizens, uh, Citizen Services Department, um, being moved into both administrative and finance, so that decreased to zero, and the administrative and finance departments increased accordingly. And then the other increases were really, you know, mostly just cost of living increases, um, that was, that was the majority, um, of the increases there. Uh, similar pie charts here for 2018 and 2017 on, on expenditures, as far as where your money goes. Um, not a big, um, difference between last year and this year either, other than administrative and finance, because of that change in Citizen Services, um, but overall, similar to a lot of cities, um, police or public safety and then public works are the, the highest, um, areas where, where expenditures are typically spent out of the general fund. Um, with that, just a quick look at the tax capacity levy and rates, uh, the top chart is the total tax capacity for the year, that did go up from 2017 to 18, um, from 40 point, 44.7 up to about 47.5. Um, the bottom line, the green line, is your certified tax levy, that did go up as well from 20.7, um, up to 21.4 million, and that increase in your levy was smaller than, than the increase in your net, um, total tax capacity, so your total, your tax levy rate did go down, even though your levy increased. So it went down to the lowest level in the five years here, um, to 45.91 percent. Going into some of the enterprise fund activity, uh, the ambulance service fund, operating revenues increased about 117,000, um, mostly because of an increase of 3.2 percent in the number of calls, and then an increase, um, increased collections, um, as well. And then operating expenses did increase about 160,000, um, mostly because of cost of living increases, and then the hiring of, um, new firefighters, um, of which part of their salaries were quoted to the ambulance fund, or are covered by the ambulance fund. Overall, a healthy net position for this fund, um, it increased 1 million, uh, just under 1.1 million, to a total of $3.2 million for the year. The environmental utility fund, um, similar results here, increase in revenues, um, because of an increase in the environmental fee. Operating expenses did decrease, and a big part of that, um, was it, was GIS work that was done in 2017, and then also, if you remember, a couple of years ago, you had to implement, um, GASB-68, which added a liability for your net pension liability, so you actually had a decrease in, um, the net, the pension expense related to that liability of $117,000 this year, so that, um, contributed to the overall decrease in, in operating expenses. And then overall, um, the operating income with depreciation number there, um, 1,444,000, so that does include depreciation, which means that, um, your rates are at a place where you're able to, um, build a little bit of a balance to help offset future capital costs. So that depreciation number is, is essentially writing off your capital assets as you use them each year, and if you're able to generate operating income, when depreciation expense is included, it shows that you're, you're building your fund balance, your net position to be able to use some of that in the future, so you maybe don't have to, um, bond for, um, future projects, at least not for the full projects. Recycling project fund, operating revenue was in, was up about 38,000, and then operating expenses were flat for the year. Uh, this fund is showing, um, an operating loss in each of the five years here, um, but that's by design, as you have some intergovernmental revenue that's helping, um, with, with the operations of this fund. And the sanitary sewer fund, you have an operating revenue increase, um, relatively flat, of about 0.9 percent. Operating expenses were up about $77,000, mostly because- of about 0.9 percent. Operating expenses were up about $77,000, mostly because of a new wage allocation that took effect in 2018. So more wages were allocated to wastewater services. And then overall, again, with this fund and operating income with depreciation here, so you're able to build your net position balance for future capital needs. And then the streetlight utility fund, nothing real significant here. Operating revenues did decrease about $98,000, excuse me, and then operating expenses were also down about $11,000. So overall, relatively consistent activity here, and did have operating income of $294,000 this year. So overall, I think, looking at the general fund, the health of the general fund, and the health of the enterprise funds, you're sitting really well. You have a healthy position in each of the funds. And as I mentioned earlier, with the clean compliance reports, the clean internal control reports, management and staff do a really nice job of, with the finances, and coming in right around that 2 percent or under 2 percent of budget, is doing a good job at maintaining and sticking within the budget that council approves.
Thank you for that report. That was very good. And thank you for pinch hitting tonight. We appreciate that.
Yes, no problem.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Councilmember Juneman?
It's not a question. It's just a comment, because in our conversations that morning as well, we, once again, owed Ellie and her staff a great debt for how well this is done. It's really, it's, you know, not every police can say this. So we thank you for all of your efforts, you and your staff. And it also is reflected in the fact that they said to us they had no problem having anything answered, getting their hands on whatever they needed, whatever. So we know we're, financially, we're well-run. So thank you.
Worth your weight in tax capacity.
Any other questions or comments by the council? Then we need a motion to accept the 2018 comprehensive annual financial report.
Mayor, I move to accept the.
He started actually talking first.
But I will defer.
No, we didn't. I did. Okay. But you can go first, and I'll second.
I defer.
Councilmember Juneman, if you, he, Councilmember Smith defers to you.
Go ahead.
All right. I move to accept the 2018 comprehensive annual financial report.
Second.
Seconded by Juneman, motion to accept the 2018 comprehensive annual financial report. Any further discussion?
None.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And councilmembers, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. And good night.